I'd like to take this opportunity called to order the Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for Tuesday, April 7th, at 6:30 PM. Could we stamp this pledge? Trustee, would you do the honors?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is one question that's been shared with us. It's fairly brief, but here we go. The question was exactly the change regarding the Rivley. It's the addition of 12 units to the building. The question was asked about a deletion, which did not take place. And then a question about whether the current payments are due in the agreement. And it's my understanding that one of the payments is past due. They acknowledge it and purportedly are going to correct that within a week or two.
What payment is that on?
It's not here.
Catherine Gary emailed questions into the clerk regarding the...
So is that on the agenda?
It's one of the documented items.
The chief chief referenced the documented item, and that's the question sheet posed and the answers.
Right, so they haven't, so they're not up to date with their payment?
That would be correct.
Alright.
Alright, let's move along.
Just the trustee Johnson had a question. The March 2020 payment was due March 15th, and it hasn't been received. I reached out to them and they said the office has been closed, but they're gonna make sure it's in within a week.
That's reasonable. Due to the coronavirus?
That's right. You want to take the...
So what about the executive session?
We're gonna take it last.
Okay. We're gonna do the executive session last. Trustee Daniels and Deputy Mayor Rempro. Presentation of activities by the public bodies. No one is here.
Wait, we didn't open the meeting.
Oh, we gotta open the meeting. Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Hobbs?
Here.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Daniels?
Present.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Presentation of activities report. There are none at this time.
Charlene sent in one.
Charlene.
On behalf of the CDA.
You have it?
I do.
She did.
Here you are.
You have a paper? Charlene Thompson. Good afternoon, all. She just sent this email, finds you all and your family as well. Following up on the representations made during the last annual meeting to clarify the following. The Village did receive $50,000 in second round of the LISC funding for the Zombie Homes Foreclosure Intervention Initiative. $30,000 of this funding was specifically earmarked to cover Mr. Brown's inspection services. The CDA also reallocated $30,000 of CDBG funding to cover Mr. Brown's inspection expenses for the Zombie Homes Initiative until the second round of LISC funding can be drawn down. Mr. Brown's first year contract is up for renewal this month. We are now continuing his services on a month-to-month basis until a decision is made as to when these services will be brought in-house at the Building Department. Mr. Brown provides the list of homes to be inspected on a monthly basis, and Mr. Brown will need to make a decision as of date. They will give him a notice to Mrs. Brown that his services will no longer be required as inspections will now be handled in-house. She will provide as to a total amount expended by the CDA for Mr. Brown's services to date by the end of the week, and let you know if you need any further clarification, wishing you all good health. Resolve that upon... Sorry?
Uh, I have a question. Uh, I didn't know Mr. Brown was still with us. I understand the last reorg meeting, I thought yesterday. I thought they said he was no longer with us, someone said.
This month ends as, does create this termination.
Mayor says this month does end his termination.
Oh, this month?
Yes, sir. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Samantha Fountain.
Wait, wait, hold on. Wait, so, but that contradicts what the notes you said that you just read from the CDA director.
Can you reread what she said, make it real clear?
Okay, so... Starting from where at the beginning. Joe will need to make a decision as of date. He will give a notice to Mrs. Brown that his services will no longer be required as these inspections will now be handled in-house. And his one-year contract is up for renewal this month. And they are now continuing his services on a month-to-month basis until a decision is made as to when the services will be brought in-house to the Buildings Department. On a monthly basis.
So he's still employed, he's going, the plan is to keep him employed, which is what was not stated during the reorg meeting last night. In reorg meeting last night, it was that the $50,000 that they expended and that they were discontinuing that service for Zombie Homes.
Right, so I think that, so in Charlene's email, she said that she was clarifying the statements that were made at yesterday's reorg meeting, but I read this clarification to mean that they reallocated an additional $30,000 of CDBG monies, and once that is done, Mr. Brown's services will no longer be needed because the inspections will be done by the Buildings Department.
No, I didn't hear that. What I heard was that they got $30,000 additional from list, and that he would be on a month-to-month, and that they plan on reallocating $30,000 CDBG money and to keep him online, keep him on board until such time as that function is brought in-house. Is that not what she wrote?
So I think that function brought in-house means that the Buildings Department will be taking it over, but we would need Charlene to clarify, because I'm interpreting what she wrote.
Right, and I have a question, because to my knowledge, I don't know about the Zombie Home Task Force, you know, actually going out checking these homes. And I would like to see the next, the last report that they have of the homes that they inspected, because that was an issue last time. Based on the list that I received, the homes that was inspected, some of those homes, people were already living in it. So, you know, I just wanted to double check on that.
Right.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't an accurate list the last time I checked. And I know it was mentioned also that, you know, this is not coming from the taxpayers, this is funding that they receive, but still, we shouldn't waste funding. I just wanted to make that for the record.
I believe, Deputy Mayor Rempro, was your question relating to, you know, his, I guess his reappointment on the, was it planning or zoning board as related to his appointment or contractual obligations with Zombie Houses? So that's what we're talking about yesterday, is I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to be clear on whether he's on the, is he still doing the homes? Or if he's not, because I understood last night that he wasn't doing them anymore.
I agree, that was my, that was my understanding as well, when we voted him back on to the...
I was just trying to get some clarity.
So by the... We could double check, if we have an opportunity with our CDA director, because my understanding was as well that his services ended this month.
I think that we just need to ask Charlene directly.
Right, that's the wise way to go. Are there any other reports?
No, sir. Continue, ma'am.
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Samantha Fountain, Deputy Village Clerk. The Board of Trustees hereby waives a reading of the minutes of the regular meeting, March 17, 2020, and accepts them as reviewed.
So move.
You need a second for that?
Yes, sir.
Did anybody, uh...
Nobody's second. Trustee Hobbs made a motion.
Not second? Oh, okay.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Rempro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk wishes to report that Mayor Ryan and Deputy Mayor Rempro have approved the miscellaneous business licenses as reviewed. Justice Court, monthly submitted by Judge Dale. Report for the Village Justice for the month of February 2020. Total numbers cases reported before the court, $1,949. Total monies admitted to the Village Controller, $181,226. Copy of this report is on file in the Village Clerk's office during regular business hours. Agenda item number five. Whereas Rivley LG Redevelopment Company LLC is a redevelopment company organized under an operating pursuant to the Limited Liability Company Law of the State of New York and the Private Housing Finance Law of State of New York with office at 301A Central Avenue, Lawrence, New York, 11559. The company, and whereas the company owns real property known as, as located at 40-44 West Columbia Street, AKA 139-147 Main Street, Hempstead, New York. The property, and whereas, the company is a party to a payment in lieu of taxes agreement dated as of May 16, 2003, between the company and the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. A municipal corporation maintained its principal offices at 99 Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. The Village, which agreement was amended on November 17, 2008, and further amended June 5, 2018. The pilot agreement, and whereas, the company and the Village desire to amend and restate the terms of the pilot agreement so as to set forth terms and conditions as the pilot agreement as amended set forth in the annexed, second amended, and restated payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the mayor and the Village of Hempstead is hereby authorized to execute the annexed, second amended, and restated payment in lieu of taxes agreement. I need a motion?
I wish to move.
I'll move.
I need a second?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes. I'm sorry, just a question, one more question. So they're saying that they're going to pay the last thing. Is that correct?
The March 2020 payment?
Right.
Yes, they're saying that they'll have it delivered within the next week. They said that their office has been closed due to the pandemic, and it was oversight on their part. It was due March 15th.
Alright, and which is understandable, but so isn't that like putting the cart before the horse? Should we wait for the payment and then bring this up?
That's up to the board.
I'm just saying, you know, we can make promises, but I would rather, you know, me see the payment and then put it up the board.
So trustee Hobbs, are you looking to pull this?
Yes.
To await payment? That's up to you guys. I don't think it makes a difference. If they don't make the payment, you could always, you know, cancel the contract. That's up to you.
Right, but again, you know, why wait until find that out? Let's wait for the payment.
Is it possible that something could be done to change this? Make it comfortable for the members of the board?
Well, what's comfortable for me is that they make their payment.
No, I understand, and that issue came up, and their answer, as you heard, was understandable, is the word you used. I agree that their office was closed. They want a week.
Right, and so we have another meeting this month?
We do.
Mr. Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I would hope that that same, you know, it's a common word that's used now, that that same energy will be given to when people like Renaissance Downtown, when they haven't made payments. I would hope that same outlook or that energy is given to them when they don't make their payments sometime. Right.
And well...
So we, I noticed some leniency has been given to the Renaissance Downtown. They've been giving leniency in regards to payments, and we have done things to give them time to get their stuff in order. So if we can do that for big projects such as that, this pilot that we already agreed to, and it was due to the coronavirus, that's the explanation that they were giving. I think that's a decent explanation for why the payment wasn't, and they said they were gonna make the payment. I don't see that's a reason for us to pull it. That's my opinion.
Well, and let me just say for the record that based on my voting, I always make sure that anytime anybody has a pilot, that their payment is up to date. And that's not just this company, it's any company. I always make sure that their payments are up to date, and that's on the record.
I'm just talking about the pilot, I'm talking about the whole Renaissance Downtown.
Well, again, I'm talking about how I vote based on extending pilots to make sure payments are up to date.
Was this, was this seconded already? I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Yes, Mayor had made the motion, trustee Johnson had seconded.
So will be it questions now?
Yes.
That's correct.
What is the current square footage of the building?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Can you give me the paperwork?
Who's confirmed that square footage of the building?
I mean, the square footage, should we assume that comes from the Buildings Department?
It would.
That would be with the Buildings Department, because they do, if you look in their meeting, trustee Daniels will see the section block in lots. But it doesn't say the square footage there, but the Buildings Department would have that. It does say square footage on the second page, though, I see down in number five. It says agreed to be 110,933 based on square footage.
Right, my question is, who confirmed the square footage of the building?
The Building Department would. I'm texting Joe Simone, so hopefully I can get an answer for you.
Sorry?
I'm texting Joe Simone, hopefully I can get an answer for you.
I doubt Joe knows that without, okay. Ask him what the square footage is.
Oh, so definitely we wouldn't know off the top of our heads here. I could only get it from him.
And you also ask him what the square footage of the building is, of the additional space that they're putting on the building? And who has confirmed that?
So as of December 31, 2018, it was 110,933 square feet?
Is that the residential portion of the building or the...
I'm getting that from the pilot agreement that was approved by this board, November 2018.
The extension agreement?
Correct. So, and that's for everyone's knowledge, that's at the end of page two, in paragraph five, subsection one is where I got that number.
Right, and when it was approved, you know, I wasn't on the board at that time, so when you said this board?
Sorry, well, no, the board in November 2018, sorry.
Thank you.
I have a question while we're waiting.
Yes, sir?
Would it make a big difference whether we vote on it tonight or at the next board meeting? Which is two weeks from now? So that we might be able to get all these questions answered?
There was a question, no one's listening here.
Madam Attorney? Because that's up to you, that's up to the board, I'm sorry, I didn't know that was...
I don't think it's dramatic one way or the other.
I apologize.
We have a motion, the second, we could either move to vote, or we could withdraw those two motions and revisit this.
Madam Attorney says that you can make a motion to withdraw the two motions?
The mayor can withdraw his motion.
Can withdraw his motion, and then put it on the next meeting, April 21st?
Yeah, at least we'll have a chance to find out some of the answers that we're looking for.
So, just to be clear, you just want to know what the additional square footage is for the 12 units?
I'd like to confirm the square footage of the 12 units and the square footage of the actual residential portion of the building versus the square footage for the residential and the commercial, which the commercial space should not be under this pilot.
But you guys already approved that in 2018, though, right?
I'd like to confirm the commercial square footage, and I'd like to confirm the square footage of the residential component of the building.
Currently.
And I just wanted to make sure that the payment is received.
Okay.
Okay. I know we're...
Additionally, I'd like to know what rent guidelines are being utilized for additional 12 units? And the term of that affordability period under those units that are being rented or being added, sorry? And what is the justification for the additional 12 units? If I'm mistaken, I understand that this extends the extension? That would be a question to the attorney.
I didn't get the question. You said, you're asking if this extends the extension?
Correct.
No, the year stays the same. It applies, the pilot would apply to the 12 additional units that they're proposing, but the length of the life of the pilot is the same.
So the original extension went through when?
2033. And it wasn't an extension, it was a restatement, because the initial pilot was from 2003, and it was a 30-year pilot. Expiring in '33. That stayed the same. You guys restated it in 2018, and that's with the infrastructure payments, and the payments for the PAL were negotiated and added in that restatement. Now there's a second restatement saying we want to increase the size of the building by 12 units, and we want the pilot to apply to those 12 units. So I have your question for my homework is, you want to know the differences in the square footage for the commercial space, the current residential space, and then the additional residential space that they're proposing?
Correct.
Okay.
And what's the justification for adding 12 units?
And the reason why they're adding 12 units? Yes?
And the affordability program under which the 12 units will be governed by?
That's still under the Private Housing Finance Law.
Private Housing Finance Law does not tell you what the affordability of the units are, nor does it tell you how long those units are going to be being afforded?
Okay, I mean, I did ask that question, and they said it would be under the same terms as the existing agreement and under the Private Housing Finance Law, but maybe, maybe I'm missing something with that. So I'll find out and get back to you.
So I think a motion was made to pull it, withdrawing until...
I withdrew, but I'm not waiting for it.
Trustee Johnson? If you withdraw, trustee Johnson doesn't have to.
Okay, let's move.
Okay, so that's both. That's it, trustee Daniels, those are the only things?
Now?
Okay, that item was pulled. Item number five, we're moving on to number six.
So we have to vote to vote?
Now, because he's withdrawing his motion. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Larry Lutz, purchasing agent, and Bijan Favahani, engineering department. That bid number five, HEMV, 2018, 2019. 2018 requirements specification for cleaning, TV inspection, repair, and rehabilitation of sewage pipeline on various streets in the Incorporated Village of Hempstead be granted additional one-year extension under the same terms and conditions as new bid number 10, HEMV, 2019, 2020, in this fiscal year, be awarded to the lowest bidder, Earth Repair LLC, PO Box 516119 and Phillips Avenue, Spion, New York, 11040, the amount of $299,989.
So move.
So move.
That was the second trustee, the deputy mayor. Okay, so trustee...
Question, question. I don't know if I'm unmuted. There's some overlap between what's being asked right here and the Cameron scoping project that was previously approved by the village. I couldn't get ahold of Bijan in time for this, but it makes no sense to go and spend $300,000 to extend an existing bid for earthworks when the Cameron Associates is part of their scoping project that was previously approved would actually do the CCTV inspection already. So we would be double paying for something. So I think the bid needs to change in order to, for earthworks. I think earthworks is probably the right group to make the adjustments and the fixes, but I don't see why we would pay them to do something that we've already paid someone else to do.
But isn't earthworks also doing repair and rehab? Was the Cameron resolution to also do repair and rehabs after the CCTV inspection?
That's exactly the point. So why would we pay them to do the CCTV inspection when someone else is doing it? I'm not asking Cameron to do the repair work. I'm saying the CCTV portion of this contract is due to what Cameron Associates already do.
And then, I'm not sure, I don't think that we ever commissioned, although the board voted to have that done, I'm not sure that Cameron was actually commissioned to do the work.
So if you're not sure, why are we voting on this today?
Because this actually, they did have it placed already, so they're asking to extend it. I mean, if you, I was saying we need to get a chance to talk to Bijan, but I guess it's something else that we could, if the board wants to pull it, we could pull it. But my understanding, I remember asking Frankie about that work, you know, whether Cameron had given us any invoices or had been commissioned to do that work, and he said no.
We voted on a resolution to do this, some of this work?
Correct.
Okay, so if we've already voted on that, why are we then extending an existing agreement to do some of the same work?
We have to take it up with GPW.
In fact, once we save the money from, off of this bid, that's more money to do more repair work should we find more repair work is necessary once Cameron's already went through it.
Alright, so I withdraw my motion.
Do you want me to get Frankie on the phone? Oh, it's withdrawn.
It's withdrawn, yes.
That item is being pulled, madam attorney? I don't know, you asked, you asked the mayor or the board?
It was pulled.
He's withdrawing the motion, but are we pulling the item? To the next meeting?
We are.
Okay.
This is just an extension of a document. If something is wrong, we can always put it back on. There's no urgency that, well, you're just extending an existing bid.
No, agreed, agreed, but I was offering to get Frankie on the phone. We should just allow time.
The person that's on this docket, they were already doing work before?
Correct.
Before we had this second thing where we had a resolution to have get the other Cameron involved?
That's my understanding, and that's why I said we should probably get some clarification from them, because this board did vote to have Cameron do the study. So the question should be, why isn't Cameron doing it?
Cameron hasn't begun the study as of yet.
No, and I was asking why, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't think the resolution included a dollar amount. I think that we were projecting...
It was $171,000. It was a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
But did but did the trustee Daniels, did the resolution actually have a dollar amount?
Yes, I I don't know. I I don't remember the actual resolution, but we remember we had the numbers already. I think it was already included.
Right. So the I I remember that the projected funds were coming from income from ProChamps and also the infrastructure payments that we received from the village. So the initial seventy-one thousand from March of two thousand and nineteen and then we were using, going to include the seventy-one thousand for the March twenty twenty payment.
Correct.
So we're gonna, so we'll pull it and get the clarification.
Yes, if we can.
So item number six has been pulled.
Yes.
Item number seven, resolved that upon the recommendation of Kevin S. Cogan, Assistant Chief of Police, that the board hereby approves the internal to an agreement with SST referred to as Shot Spotted to provide gunshot detection solutions to help the Village of Hempstead to identify, analyze, and respond to violent gun crimes.
So move.
And then a second?
I'll say, I'll say, I just, I just, one question I had to the chief, I didn't get the I get it just the the cost, the forty-six thousand annual cost. And how did I compare it to the the current yield that we have? I don't think anybody, no doubt, will stop there next week. See if they'll think we said.
Was that a question? Cause I can't hear.
Trustee Daniels, can you repeat that, please? They couldn't hear you.
I I don't know if anybody knows the answer, but I don't know whether it's possible to the previous year. But the hundred and fourteen-six thousand a year now.
Uh blah blah.
You know what the price was?
Four hundred and sixteen thousand.
Oh, for the agreement? Is that what you're asking about?
It what, I'm sorry, what was that, trustee Johnson?
I'm saying four hundred and sixteen thousand there.
That's the subtotal.
Subtotal.
So it's it's forty, what is it? It looks like it's one thirty-eight nine a year. So my understanding is that the difference in this contract is that there won't be a three percent increase like there was previously.
Right, we're locking them into a price for the recent shot fired, but what's the change in price from the previous contract?
Oh, from the previous year? Is was there an increase? Um I don't have, I don't have the previous contract if with me.
Was this second, I have several questions.
Yes, it was.
It was. It was? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
I have, well, several questions. The effectiveness of the current Shot Spotted, I I would like to see a report and how effective it is, how many times that a human error said it was a gunshot, it was a car backfire, things of that nature. This this is a lot of money and from being in the neighborhood, it's oftentimes people say they heard shots and I don't think it's being reported to the board when 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 the shots fired through the village. And I know it happens much more often than than we get reports about the shots, shots fired. It was a time when it was almost every day we, or every other day we was getting shots fired, we was getting the notifications. Now we we're not getting the notifications, so. I would like this pulled and and to um I get an opportunity to look into it further.
I'm sending the email too as you speak, but yes, okay. Okay, you need a mo- motion to withdraw?
I will, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Item number seven has been pulled.
Wait, hold on, this wasn't, this was too late now?
No.
Question, the question is uh from my side is, are we at the uh the head of the current contract? But if you read the contract, it says that um I thought I saw February day in there. Subscription services funded, we have previously been renewed from February fifth, twenty twenty.
Right.
Now we're we're in April seven.
Right, so they're probably month to month right now.
And I have one more question. What's the capabilities of this Shot Spotted? Because the previous administration many times had said that it was a camera that would be able to zoom in on a perpetrator that was firing a weapon, and not one time have I seen any film or any evidence that the Shot Spotted was able to zoom in on any criminal that's firing a weapon, not once. So I don't know if that was false information to s- to sell the Shot Spotted. Is this this company offering anything different? Do they have ways to to film a person that's shooting? Is it audible? I mean, what are they offering? That's that's the question that I have.
I included that.
I do recall a lot of parts of the camera, and I had about either seen that.
Yeah, that was false information.
So this is this this uh this is the board in agreement that we're pulling seven?
Yes, we are.
Item number seven has been pulled. Item number eight, resolved that upon the recommendation of Sharice Vanderhall, Village Attorney, the Board of Trustees has approved for Mental Health Association of Nassau County, having an office at sixteen Main Street, Hempstead, New York, to utilize sixty-eight parking spaces in Parkville Field Four in the Incorporated Village of Hempstead from October one, two thousand and nineteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. The mayor, B. N. He hereby is authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the Village of Hempstead on such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the village attorney.
So move.
I just would ask the board.
Let's get a second.
Let's get a second for us.
I I I'll say.
Okay.
But just, is this, is this a use that we want in downtown? I mean, sixteen Main Street is between uh Front Street and and obviously Fulton. And and we just spent how much on the beautification of that area, including papers, water feature? Um the street just was repaved. Is this a use that we want? If we're trying to be conducive and do something downtown without a full redevelopment plan, will we want to have the Mental Health Associates of Nassau County in an area that we just invested, probably close to a billion dollars if not more?
This is going to be in Parking Field Four. Am I correct, the sixty-eight spots?
Right, but I think I think that trustee Daniels' question is about um the use of having Mental Health Association located at that address if we're trying to develop that area.
Okay.
Um I, am I right, trustee Daniels?
Correct. We just invested through grant money from New York State and others, and then repaved it with funds that we had. And 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 is this a use that is conducive to inviting, you know, other uses on Main Street? We talked about family-oriented uses. Well, I I don't yet see a family-oriented anything, Chuck E. Cheese, next to a a mental establishment.
Are they presently used in these sixty-eight spots?
Yes.
So what are we, are talking about a retroactive renewal type of arrangement?
So, right, their their contract actually expired in September. They've been month to month, so that's why this contract is dated beginning October one. It does expire, trustee Daniels, in May of twenty-one, May of next year. Um so, to your point, I think when the village confirms um its direction with the term with regards to the the development of that area, your question is warranted and should be revisited. But I'm not sure that um renting spaces to them from now until May of next year is going to prohibit any development that's happening right now. Cause we're talking about Mental Health Association relocating from that address.
I'm not, I'm not following your 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 reasoning.
Okay, so Mental Health Association is located there now and this contract is for one year. So whatever development you're gonna do in that area isn't gonna change the location of Mental Health Association as it stands currently. Uh uh unless I'm missing something. I I don't, I I I don't think the village saying, no, we can't park in this parking space, is gonna change where they're located.
Are are you suggesting that we wait until 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 next year to start looking for or be inviting the businesses to come into that location or into that area?
No, no, I'm saying that this contract only runs for a year and I think that it'll take about that to really, really get on the same page as to how we're gonna develop that area. We just.
So 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 question then would be, if 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 you don't sign this, if I'm mistaken, that that lot is muni-metered, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
But what's the difference?
It's what I didn't.
Muni-metered.
Why do we have to provide these places? If it's already muni-meter, they can just pay the meter.
Okay. That I mean, that that's also an action. That's that's, you know, that's up to the board. I I but I I thought your question was specifically about the location of Mental Health Association and whether they have spots there. I don't think that's gonna affect the location within a year, is the point I was making.
Well, I mean, you, I I I don't agree with that. I mean, but that's subjective. I mean, but we can't, we can't, we can't be inviting the businesses when we lease all the 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 parking to other to other businesses that are currently there. It makes it very difficult to attract new businesses in where they don't have parking available for their clients and their customers. And we're consistently leasing blocks of spaces to to entities that's there, that purpose, that actually they're not conducive to to growing and developing the downtown area.
But but we do, at the same time, make sure we maintain an ample amount of spaces for the public and the businesses to use. We don't overle- we don't over lease the lots at a, by any stretch of the imagination.
The spots closest to the buildings are being leased to tenants in the building. That's not, to me, that's not necessarily being, having an eye on people that turn spaces over in and out of retail when the spaces closest to the buildings are leased to tenants within the building.
But they're not though.
They're absolutely not. Go back and look, go look at the space numbers that's on all leases that's there, two thirty-six Fulton.
I know, I I I actually, I actually did the space numbers.
Excuse me?
The the the.
Not finished, my point?
Okay.
Both the 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 spaces are leased, the tenants are arguing over the spaces that are closest to the building for a reason. And then those spaces are not conducive to the retail tenants that are on Main Street or on Fulton. Hence is why we see all the vacancies in that area, one of the reasons. The other reason is we've got these governmental offices such as Mental Health and Children's Family Association located on those blocks that's not conducive to foot traffic, that doesn't populate those buildings. So if we're not gonna redevelopment, let's re- redevelopment, at least let's not have practices that are not inviting to commerce. And there's no reason why we have to lease those spaces if they're going to work there. Let them beat the meter. Maybe extend the the hours of the meter. That's just someone going there and turning the dial, so it's a four-hour meter or eight-hour meter or something longer. We don't have to, we don't have to give them a lease to these spaces. So what happens when someone is sick and is not even coming to work? That space is leased. And somebody that's trying to go to one of the restaurants on Main Street now can't park close to the restaurant on Main Street because it's reserved for somebody who's not even there.
So might I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Why not? I mean, since this, since this is uh, they want to lease them until May of twenty twenty-one. Why don't we look, we pass this and look at all of them in twenty twenty-one and go the same route with everybody?
I, you have to start from somewhere. Can't, you can't keep pushing the, kicking the can down the road and doing that with all of these leases. You keep saying to everybody, okay, we'll fill these spaces, but we'll, well, we stopped doing this later on. Meanwhile, we're suffocating the businesses downtown. What what was the sense of beautifying downtown or that strip downtown if we're not gonna do anything to invite businesses to be comfortable in that area? It's 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 a waste of money. There's businesses on Front Street right now that are caged up with graffiti on or vacant. And we just spent a million plus paving the land, paving the road, putting new curb and gutter, putting a water feature in, putting benches. Now this doesn't make any sense. We're shooting ourselves in the foot. If we don't want to do a big redevelopment, we want to keep downtown looking like it is, then let's protect it downtown. We shouldn't be leasing blocks of parking spaces to to single, to single tenants for uses that's not even conducive to commerce downtown. This doesn't make any sense.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Don't you think the CDA should be a part of this uh discussion?
Why?
It's community development. If we're talking about developing the downtown and bringing different businesses down there, I think she she should be part of the the conversation.
The CDA is the, is the governing body that put the investment into this area. And now our board is the ones that are, that are taking away from the value that they've already invested in. So they are involved. They're the ones who scoped this whole project to to do the water feature, to do the, to the paving. I mean, they they lobbied to do the the that section of bench.
So maybe she could verb, verb, she could verbally lend something to your argument? That's what I'm saying.
All right, the question I would ask, if Mental Health Association at sixteen Main Street does not have this parking permit, who would encourage other businesses to come in that would increase foot traffic, for example, would this mean necessarily that they would move? Or is that the next possible step uh going forward?
It means they would beat a meter to park.
Exactly, and would that encourage them to remain or to leave?
Depending on what time they got to work. They may or may not have the spot that's closest to the, to the building. Maybe it'll go to Mrs. Brown who who now wants to park there that she can go and get a bagel from the Bop or something like that, so that she doesn't now have to park, you know, another fifty or a hundred feet away to go and 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 patronize one of our.
I think the question would be, is the likelihood that they're gonna remain with the meter parking? Or is there a sense of encouragement that perhaps they would look elsewhere and then we could get something more exciting available to the downtown? Well, we have a motion in a second. Should we move the vote?
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
I'm gonna say no on this one.
Trustee Hobs?
I have to say no.
Trustee Daniels?
I couldn't hear the votes.
Trustee Johnson and trustee Hobs said no.
No.
Trustee Renfro?
Uh, no.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion failed. Mayor said yes. Item number nine, resolved that upon the recommendation of Sharice Vanderhall, Village Attorney, the Board of Trustees hereby approves for Lerna, Arnold, and Winston, L O P, four seventy-five Park Avenue, South twenty-eighth floor, New York, New York, to provide representation in a matter of seeking and declaratory judgment.
Move.
Declaratory, sorry.
Yes.
Declaratory, declaratory, okay, thank you.
Move.
Second.
So move.
I got it. Trustee Johnson and Hobs? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
No.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolved that upon the recommendation of Patricia Perez, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for Sacred Heart Academy, forty-seventh Cathedral Avenue, to host a five K run for Saturday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, from nine AM to eleven AM. Total cost, nine thousand dollars. After calculations of eighty percent, the cost will be seven thousand two hundred dollars to be paid on or before August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Said permission is contented upon compliance with the rules and the regulations of the Hempstead Police Department and all liability in connection with the holding of this event and observance of the code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead as it applies to all group gatherings of this type. The filing of all appropriate, as determined by the board herein, the indemnification and execution of a. the indemnification and execution of a hold harmless agreement on such terms and conditions as acceptable to the Village Attorney.
Move.
Trustee Johnson moved?
Second.
Trustee Renfro, second. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
I was on you, yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Item eleven, whereas on or about March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, President Trump declared a national emergency regarding the outbreak of COVID-nineteen virus, and whereas on or about March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, the Families First Coronar, Coronar Virus Response Act, which included a temporary expansion of FMLA emergency paid leave provisions, was signed into federal law. And whereas the act is due to take effect no later than April second, two thousand and twenty. And whereas, the act covered employers, including public employers, to exclude emergency responders and healthcare providers from the applicable FMLA and emergency paid leave provisions of the act. And whereas, the Incorporated Village of Hempstead Village recognizes that emergency responders and/or healthcare providers deliver critical public health and safety emergency services to the village's residents and businesses. Now therefore, be it resolved effective immediately, and to the extent may it be required by federal law or regulation, the Village hereby exempts and excludes its emergency responders, including but not limited to all public members of its police and fire ambulance departments as may exist. Public works personnel and any other ambulance departments that may exist. Public works personnel and any other job classifications as may be excludable under federal law and regulations from any applicable FMLA and emergency paid leave provisions of the act. The Village reserves the right to modify or terminate this resolution at any time in order to meet the needs of the Village and its employees.
So
Moved by trustee Hogs?
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan and the Board of Trustees, hereby approves the Hempstead Fire Department Council, Fire Council Minutes as reviewed date of February twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty.
So, second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Hogs? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Item thirteen, resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, Village Treasurer, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Volunteer Firefighter Service Award Program list of all two thousand and nineteen of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead Fire Department.
Move.
Moved by trustee Johnson?
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Abstain.
Trustee Hogs abstain, trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Sharice Vanderholt Village Attorney, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and adopts the change to Chapter Eight entitled Planning Board of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead Court Ordinances as proposed at the March third, two thousand and twenty public hearing.
Um, sorry, we
Item fourteen?
Item fourteen, yes.
Is moved by trustee Hogs?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thirteen, I'm sorry, go back to the
Okay, we're gonna go back to number thirteen.
Right, um
Trustee Hogs?
Right, in, in, in the vote, uh, trustee Deputy Mayor, uh, should abstain. Uh, this is the service award points for the firefighters, and your family member is on the fire department.
Okay, so we're gonna withdraw the motion and then vote to withdraw because it was approved?
But did he hear me?
Deputy Mayor, are you understanding Paul Renfro's name is on the list?
Deputy Mayor?
I didn't hear you.
What they stated is that you have a family member that's on the fire department, a service awards program, so you must abstain from voting, so we're gonna withdraw the motion and then take a vote?
Have a family member there?
Is Paul Renfro?
Paul Renfro?
Who?
Paul Renfro?
Paul, Paul.
Paul.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Give him a ball.
Okay.
Let's do it again.
Withdraw trustee Johnson, you withdraw?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're gonna make a motion to withdraw the whole vote, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yeah, wait.
Wait, wait, no, it's not, because they voted.
Trustee Johnson withdrew his motion.
So, but they voted, so now you're gonna revote?
I'm voting for them to withdraw that.
All right.
No, once he withdrew, you don't need to vote.
We voted.
But they voted.
We carried the whole
They carried the whole motion. But he withdrew, he
Right.
See, before we didn't vote.
It was, it was like, it was motion second, and we voted on it, before we withdrew, before the vote was made. So we have to vote to agree with this. Yes.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Okay.
All right, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? He stepped away. Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
So do I have to abstain, you said?
No.
No, you're gonna, right now, we're withdrawing your vote, the last vote.
Okay.
Trustee
Yes.
And Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna
Now we do it.
Now we're gonna do it again. So, resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, Village Treasurer, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Volunteer Firefighter Service Award Program List of two thousand and nineteen of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead Fire Department.
Move.
It was moved by trustee Johnson?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Daniels? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Abstain.
Trustee Hogs abstain, trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Do I have to abstain also?
Yes, sir. Say abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain, trustee Renfro, Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. Item number fourteen, we've already received two motions, it was moved by trustee Hogs, and second by trustee Renfro for the village ordinances, trustee Johnson?
This is fifteen.
I just abstained.
Number fourteen.
On number fourteen now, Ryan.
Right, about the, uh, approving the law?
Yes. For the planning board?
Yeah, the dormers, this is that, that I agree with, with what, what's been done there, but I think we, we're still not going the next step, and I had a discussion with, with Attorney Randall Hall. So hopefully, you know, maybe that next step will be moving to some kind of design review board, because while, while we're now not allowing people to sit, to practice through, uh, the building department in terms of now they have to go to a board, the planning board still doesn't have a biopic opinion, solid basis to decline these occurrences and these dormers, unless there's a standard set up for which the dormer or the proposed alteration is not living up to. So while we, we, we caught it at one level, we're putting the planning board in a really, we're in a position in, I guess, putting ourselves in that position as well, where, you know, they can prove one, and then another one they don't approve, and it's quite a lot of, of, uh, situation, even little situation, um, that we don't have some kind of standard. So I think we still need another layer to move forward on, which is a design standard we report for, even for the residential structure in the village.
Are, are we saying that the home design has to fit the character of the neighborhood, and there's nothing in place to indicate such?
We're saying that we don't have anything in place, so trustee Daniels and I had a lengthy discussion about, um, that being the next step, is coming up with some type of design guidelines for the suburban areas, as well as design guidelines for the, uh, North Main Street area.
So that is the next step?
Yes, that's something that we should, we should take it a step further, and do that as well, not just stop here.
Okay. All right.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I missed a motion in a second on that one.
Oh, the motion was trustee Hogs, and the second was trustee Renfro?
Okay, sorry, thank you. I believe it was, um, one of the March board meetings.
It was the first meeting in March, I believe.
The first meeting, thank you.
Oh, in this, in this year, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
It was just before, so, you're right, it was the first March meeting, and that's the reason why we were scheduling it for the second meeting in April, it was before the pandemic hit to the point where New York State hung on pause.
Okay, I don't have any prob, I just, you know, people are entitled to due process, I didn't wanna do a football, you know, after somebody, uh, say we did something wrong, that's all.
No, you're right, and, um, I, 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 I just add, the only reason why I'm folded is because it would require, obviously, um, the applicant to come in and testify before us. Uh, so it, it would require more bodies in Village Hall and the courtroom for us to hold the hearing. In addition, uh, all taverns and pool halls are closed currently by order of the state, of the state. So we're not, um, affecting any rights.
Item number sixteen, resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, Village Treasurer, that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes pursuant to Section five dash five oh eight of the village law, that on Tuesday, April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty P.M., a public hearing shall be held at Village Hall, ninety-nine James A. Garraway, Hempstead, New York, on a tentative budget for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year.
Well, there's another date, uh, how are we gonna have a public hearing when we're not sure we're gonna be, uh The government order says Twenty-nine, right? Yeah, so we won't be, that's right.
So, um, this, the budget hearing actually doesn't require any testimony by the public.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna ask Joe Gill to just confirm that we can livestream the budget hearing.
Okay.
If not, um, I don't know that we can go past, I think April thirtieth may be the deadline, I think it has to be adopted by then.
Right.
So we'll have to figure out, um, what the law's allowing for in these circumstances, with regards to the budgets.
Right, all right, so, um, I make a motion, uh, that we move pursuant to the fact that we're able to, uh, do this without having public participation.
That, I'm sorry.
That we, that we vote on
Livestreaming, which has
Right, right, that as long as livestreaming will satisfy it, let's vote on it.
Yes, agreed, okay, understand.
Okay, but then that, um, goes within addendum item number one, you wanna move it to twelve noon from six thirty, so then what about addendum number one? You can't move it then to twelve noon if you're gonna have the public hearing at six thirty P.M. that Joe has already scheduled.
No, addendum number one is on the twenty-first.
Oh, okay.
But we, so we could do, is that we could move the budget hearing also to during the day, rather than having it at six thirty P.M.
And and do both, I, that's fine with me.
Um, is the board okay with making the budget hearing early at twelve noon as well on April twenty-eighth?
We have that latitude, do we not?
Yeah, but if it's livestream, we're at stream, we're having it at twelve thirty, twelve o'clock?
Correct.
Okay.
So it moves to twelve noon, madam? Yes, so it's gonna change the wording to Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, Village Treasurer, that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes pursuant to Section five dash five oh eight of the village law, that on Tuesday, April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, at twelve noon, a public hearing shall be held at Village Hall, ninety-nine James A. Garraway, Hempstead, New York, one one five five zero, on a tentative budget for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one for the fiscal year.
So move?
On livestream.
On livestream.
Yes, on livestream.
With no public participation.
Correct.
Madam Chair, madam attorney, do you have anything else I should add in there about, um, it being teleconference as well?
No, because she said it'll be livestreamed, right?
Okay, yeah, it's fine.
And the public is not, is not required to ask questions?
They, they can
Or we're not required to answer questions to the public?
Right, so you can always extend the courtesy of having the email questions prior.
Right. Just, just as we're doing with these Right, just as we're doing with these meetings.
But as, as the budget
Like your question we had today, right.
From you with, with, uh, with, with access to the clerk's office?
I'm not sure it's been published, no.
No, no, he has not, because we have to put it out ten days prior to, so we haven't received it as of yet. But Joe will
We should add that, since, we should add that to the resolution, since, to let people know that it will be available probably two weeks ahead of time, since they're not gonna be able to walk in and pick it up from the back room and have questions, find questions ahead of time.
It will be available on the village website.
Was it always available, was it
Yes, it's always available, normally they could come into the office and get it, or they could go to the library, or we would put, we always, Joe always put it in the web, well, our past treasurers has always had it in the village website, okay.
So that's the limit to their
So, but is there any way we can make it available to the people, and they only have websites?
Yes, we can, we can always make copies of them and have them out front, Joe normally has them, he would have them.
Right, okay, as long as, as long as they're gonna have access to it.
And we can put them by the front door by security?
Yes.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, I think that would better accommodate
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have most supply gloves and masks for security.
Okay. So it will be on livestream with no public participation, and it will be made available two weeks prior to the board meeting, on April twenty-first at twelve noon. I need a motion?
So move.
Trustee Hogs moved?
Second.
Second by trustee Daniels, trustee Johnson?
Uh, hold on, did you say April twenty-first?
April twenty-eighth, at twelve noon.
All right, all right.
Trustee Johnson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, Village Treasurer, that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize pursuant to Section five dash five oh eight village law, that on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, immediately following a tentative budget public hearing, there will be new water rates, billing structure hearing to be considered to become avail, effective April, August one, two thousand and twenty, for the Incorporated Village of Hempstead.
Move.
Moved by trustee Daniels, second by trustee Renfro, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frank Germanero, Director of Public Works, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints and/or approves the following salary changes for part-time laborer of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Name Michael Wilkinson, new hire, department, D.P.W., street title, laborer, grade part-time, salary fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents per hour upon civil service approval.
So move.
Moved by trustee Renfro?
Sir.
Second by trustee Johnson, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frank Germanero, Director of Public Works I'm sorry, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints and/or approves the following salary changes for Assistant Motor Repair Supervisor of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Michael Fisher, Promotion, Department, D.P.W., Garage, title Assistant Motor Repair Supervisor, grade fourteen, six O, salary eighty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars a year upon civil service approval.
So move.
Moved by trustee Hogs?
Second.
Second by trustee Renfro, trustee
Now, what's, what's his current position?
Right now, he is the apparatus, um, that title, it's an apparatus.
Fire, fire.
Fire apparatus.
Fire apparatus. So what is he working on?
He works in the garage.
In the garage.
Mo retired, and came back on part-time, and Warren Harwood moved up to the supervisor of the garage, and now Mike Fisher's gonna be assistant supervisor. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints and approves the following title change for Corporate Director, Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Names Dr. Cedric Geesley, title change, department, mayor's office, grade publicity director, salary sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars a year upon civil service approval.
Move.
Moved by trustee Hogs?
Second.
Second by trustee Renfro?
The question, i- is that on, upon C.S. approval, is this a civil service?
Okay, it's a civil service title, yes.
It's, but it's not
It's not compatible for
It's, 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 it's an exempt civil It's, 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 it's an exempt civil service title, right now, he, he was originally the secretary to the fire department, and the secretary to the fire department is not in the executive staff, this position that Dr. Easley is now holding that you all have appointed him to as the publicity director is now in the executive staff contract, but it's exempt.
What, what, what exactly, I need a little, little bit of explanation on the executive staff, what, what exactly are we saying?
I'm not a civil servant, I don't.
So, so. Um, alright, so, I didn't hear, I don't trusty Daniels.
But it's an executive.
Can you ask the Trustee Johnson's question?
Just so, the executive staff, um, contains certain titles that have certain benefits, um, namely, the, the ability to be able to cash out any unused sick time, and that's only available to executive staff, and this title is part of the executive staff. Does that answer the question?
In every position, with the exception of two, are appointed positions in the executive staff, with the exception of the superintendent of the Tax and Water Department and the superintendent of Parks and Recreation, which is George Sanders, and verily the superintendent of Tax and Water.
So my question?
It's their civil service.
Janice Richardson, what was her title?
The district title.
Exactly, right.
She's the publicity director.
Right, so, so remember, we, we agreed that we would not hire somebody, uh, to take up place and at the same time, keep somebody in the position of secretary to the fire department, and we asked Dr. Easley if he would take over as, um, uh, Janice Swat and also assistant to the mayor, and so we're, we, um, we're getting rid of secretary to the fire department and at the same time, putting him in, in the position of P R Director and assistant to the mayor.
Right, we're giving him the title for the job that he does.
Right, the title for the job that he does.
But no salary change.
Right, well, yeah, well, and, and, you know, he was doing that before, but he had the title as secretary to the fire department when he wasn't actually doing secretary to the fire department, so we're just making sure that his title matches job, the job that he's doing.
No, I get that, I get, I guess my question is, but now, I look at the civil service contract, is he now falling under?
Right, no, so, no, so, keep in mind, when we talk about civil service, even when the village, um, makes appointed positions, it still has to be approved by civil service, he's, it's not a competitive position, but any position that you give somebody in the Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Village period, must be approved by civil service.
Right.
And this position is exempt, so it doesn't mean that he's part of the C S E A bar?
Right.
No, he's not.
It just, it just means the civil service has to approve the fact that we did this.
Correct.
Is that in the contract here too?
In what?
He's not part of the contract.
Right, he's not C S E A.
No, 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 I'm, I'm asking, my question is, is this policy part of the C S E A contract?
The policy of seeking civil service approval?
Yes.
No, civil service rules, it's part of the civil service law.
Okay.
Trustee Johnson?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I trusty Dan, yeah, here's the question, you're welcome.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Gary Wu, Tre- Deputy Treasurer, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves for Ralph Frail to carry over five vacation days past his anniversary on November thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. I need a motion?
So move.
Moved by Trustee Renfro?
Second, what a question.
Second by Trustee Hobbs?
Yeah, my, so my question is, I know that he's retired, right?
Yes.
Come ahead.
So, with, with, this is vacation day that was owed to him?
I think Michael Taylor did not put it in correctly in a timely fashion.
Correct.
So, so, I'm, so, wait a minute, so when he retired, whatever he was owed was not put in his re, in his.
It looked like it was supposed to be carried over, and his supervisor didn't, um, properly carry over those five days from the previous year to this year, so when he retired, it's five days that we owed him, a cash out on that he didn't receive, because it had not been properly carried over by supervisor.
Did the supervisor admit that he didn't do that?
Yes.
Is the way, is that, that, that doesn't, that doesn't match, I think, what, what the letter said. I think the resolution should be, um, rewritten, because they, they're quoting the contract and they're saying.
Right, that, that is an option, I, I don't see.
Unless there's board approval, and it wasn't board approval.
Right, but I don't, yeah.
That doesn't match the, the storyline, right, to me, but, but I understand of the, what's going on here, he's from the backup, is that he had days, he had too many days, and when he went to cash out, the contract said you can only cash out a certain amount of days, and he wanted us to bend the rules or give him a waiver so that he could cash out those five additional days, and that generally this, uh, what, what's happening here is that the contract governs how many days you can carry over and cash out, and he has five more days than the contract states, and he's asking us to waive what's in the contract and pay him for those five days, so my, you know, my question would be, was there some kind of extenuating circumstances to do this, number one, and then one A would be, you know, if we do this now, are we basically saying everybody, everybody can just not take their vacation down at the end?
So is Gary on Zoom? Because this is, is he there?
No, I invited him in.
I would like to vote.
To, to vote?
Because, um, they actually do, they actually do have a response for this, I just don't want to.
Didn't put it in a timely fashion, right, okay.
And, and that's exactly what happened, it wasn't put in in a timely fashion, but, um, the request wasn't made to the board, do, would you like me to call Joe some, um, Joe Gill?
You, you know what, I told, I told Ralph that he probably wouldn't be on the doctor tonight anyway, so why don't you just pull it and get it ready for the next one?
Right, so, yeah, 'cause I would definitely want to make sure that it's, you know, a clerical error and, uh, not that we're at, being asked to waive something, uh, you know, with that, just, as, as long as it was a clerical error, but I want to make sure.
Okay.
Well, well, I, I, I agree, if there's an extenuating circumstance, I, I, I just, based on the backup in the letter that was written by mine, it was, it was more, uh, it was more like he had more days than he was allowed to carry over, and, you know.
Right, and, and, and that's the same, uh, interpretation I'm getting based on his letter, but if, if it's different from what he's saying, then I would like to find that out, because, you know, again, if it was a, a mistake, uh, then I can understand that, but the, the letter is not, is not showing it was a mistake.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so we didn't, we never approved it, so that's.
So, I get it, I said, why don't we pull it?
That's right. So why, why are we, um?
Because they're asking you to retroactively approve it, is the only question.
I'm gonna vote on it and get it over and say no.
I think we ought to maybe wait, if this is Michael's error, I don't think Ralph necessarily should pay the penalty for a mistake on the supervisor, we have time to find that out.
Well, yeah, let's find out.
It's still agreeing with something, you know, the question is, do, do we agree with the five, five days or not?
I think if he had worded it differently, we'd be more comfortable.
Right. So are we pulling it?
Yeah, I'm pulling my motion, I make the motion, yeah, no, who made the motion?
I don't think there's a motion here.
Trustee Renfro, you want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I didn't make the.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so this item is pulled?
Yes.
Item twenty-one has been pulled. Addendum item number one, be it resolved that Mayor Ryan and the Board of Trustees would like to reschedule the regular village board meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-first,[1631.34]